Good morning, everyone. Today is May 22, 2018. It's 10:00 a.m. This is the Special Meeting of the Taus County Board of Commissioners. We welcome everyone for being here today. I hereby call this meeting to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Chairman Farrow.
Present.
Vice Chair Gagos.
Present.
Mr. Romero.
Present.
Mr. Blakenhart.
Present.
Mr. O'Donnell.
If we could all please stand and make the luncheon in place. I pray that we can see the light of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Commissioners, I ask that because if you look on Item 6A, that is a discussion regarding Ordinance 2018-02, that because it's a discussion, there may be some questions from the public that we allow that as kind of the citizens' forum guidelines during that time of people who have staff questions that we allow. Any objections to that?
No.
Okay.
So move in accordance with the chairman's description.
Second. Okay, I'll say a second to approve the agenda, also allowing public comments during the discussion phase of that item. Clerk, call the roll.
Mr. Romero.
Yes.
Mr. Blakenhart.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gagos.
Yes.
Chairman Farrow.
Yes. Item 5 is our consent agenda. I will read each item from the consent agenda. If any commissioner has any issue with one of the items, we will pull that and after the passage of the remaining part of the consent agenda, we will handle that as the next order of business. Item A is approval of DFA Resolution 26 for 2017-18 fiscal year, resolution requesting to transfer permanent cash from the general fund to detention fund. And B is approval of budget adjustment for Public Works Fund 0204-1600. Item C is approval of purchase of 2018 Ram regular cat four by four for public works. Item D is approval of to purchase crack code hatcher two trailer mount with accessories for public works. Item E is approval of increase to increase the purchase of food expense for Taus County senior program through CES contract for the remainder of fiscal year 1718. Commissioners, you've heard the items of the consent agenda. You like your motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of law items, the exception of Item E.
Okay. So a motion to approve A through D of the consent agenda.
Second with a request that Public Works Director would just give a description real quick on the hatcher two trailer.
Okay, so we need to pull that item then.
And E, I guess. I'll amend my motion to pull out Items D and E.
Okay. Clerk, call the roll.
Mr. Romero.
Yes.
Mr. Blakenhart.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gagos.
Yes.
Chairman Farrow.
Yes. Okay.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Item E, first off, is approval of increase to purchase food expense for Taus County senior program through the CES contract for the remainder of the year. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. So that's required even though we have some cuts made to the senior program. We did receive $4,000 more for NSIP, which is to purchase raw food. Since we have area spent more than the threshold, we do need to request permission approval to increase the CES contract.
So it'll increase it by that addition.
Four thousand dollars.
Does it mean that it gets spent or...? I'm sorry.
No, you have it. Here's your item. Does it mean that it gets spent?
Yes, so it's raw food. So now that we have all sites open, just purchase raw food till month of June.
I see. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Romero, would you like to make the motion to accept?
So would Mr. Chairman to accept Item D.
Second. Okay, I have a motion in a second to approve the increase to purchase food expense for Taus County senior program through CES contract. Clerk, call the roll.
Mr. Romero.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mr. Blakenhart.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gagos.
Yes.
Chairman Farrow.
Yes. Okay, next item is approval to purchase a crack code hatcher two trailer mount with accessories for public works. Mr. Pacheco.
Good morning. Good morning, Mr. Chairman. The payment hatcher is, it was demoed to us a couple years back. It's from crack code, trailer mount, basically a fancy hatcher. It uses bricks, mastic asphalt, which fills the hopples.
But it is like a kettle.
You're trying to add a kettle.
Kettle and tar out. The hatcher.
Yes.
Okay. I kind of thought this was a...
He's gonna ask you to borrow up for certain... Do you get your training up there within corporate...
I think it's a great purchase, especially to take care of these problematic hopples after you have a chance to work on them as well. I just wanted to let... I guess this is for information, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. You want to make a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Purchase of crack code hatcher two trailer mount.
I'll second. And what was the amount?
Sixty-eight thousand, one thirty-eight ten.
So I got a picture of it now. I googled myself that question. Okay. Second.
Okay, motion in a second to approve that purchase. I stay in the motion. Clerk, call the roll.
Mr. Romero.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mr. Blakenhart.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gagos.
Yes.
Chairman Farrow.
Yes. Thank you very much. Thanks, Mr. Romero. Okay, the next item right at six under Department Matters is a discussion regarding Ordinance 2018-02 land use regulations. This will be presented by our chief planner, Mr. Nathan Sanchez. Morning, Nathan.
Good morning. Morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. Cordwell, Mr. Radio, Madam Clerk, and members of the public. Ordinance 2015-2, the Taus County Land Use Regulation has been in effect since November 2015. The land use regulations are a working document and planning staff have discovered some sections for their needs to be amendments to the current land use regulations. Staff has worked with the legal department to create a red line and blue line version of the document for the proposed amendments. Planning staff presented the red line version to the planning commission in March of 2018. The amendments that are before you are where we are at at this point in time. We believe with a few more meetings with staff and Mr. Radio, we can create a final draft. Your comments and changes today will be included in our final review. We are also reviewing comments and still meeting with constituents on their concerns. Planning staff, after the final draft is complete, will schedule with administration the next available board commissioners meeting for approval of a resolution authorized and directed publication of the date, time, meeting place, and consideration of a public hearing for the ordinance 2000-2 land use regulations. We will also probably be having another work study with the planning commission and it calls for a public hearing actually upon when we have the final. So there's still...
Public hearing with the planning commission or public hearing with us as well?
Well, it'll take... We'll probably have another work study with the planning commission to present the changes or if it works out, we could have a public hearing. We need two public hearings. We need one with the planning commission to get their recommendation on the document and then we have to have a public hearing with board of commissioners. So there's still some amount of meetings that we need to have and of course we'll get other public comments and requests of changes. Today, I would like to give a short PowerPoint presentation that outlines the changes. If it is all right with the commission, I would like to have questions after the presentation is complete and then we can go to the document specifically by page section, page that you want me to read. I am here to present the 2018 land use regulations, which is ordinance number 2018-2. In the amendments, we created a color code, which blue dering, our addition for legal review, strike through dering are removed with legal review, and red dering has been added to the document and strike through red have been removed from the dering that we have removed from the document. The role of these land use regulations, to start off, we'll start off, I'm gonna go through sequential order with the document, starting with Article 1 all the way to the... Okay, so I'm gonna start at Article 1 and like I said, I'll go through the whole document, basically from the front to the back. So in Article 1, we worked on the role of these land use regulations, page eight, section 1.2.4. This ordinance shall supersede any conflicting or inconsistent resolutions, policies, or regulations previously adopted or implemented by the Taus County regarding Taus County land use regulations and repeal the ordinance 2015-2, 2016-1, and 2007-7. Also in Article 1, we worked on the powers and duties of the Board of Adjustment and Planning Commission, which are pages 10 through 13, section 1.3.1 through 1.3.4. And we define the planning commission as a board of appeals for the planning director decisions. We reduce the Board of Adjustment from five members to three members where their primary duties will be to review variances and appeals on building codes regulations. We also did changes to, we changed the bylaws name to rules and procedures, which will not be adopted here unless there are changes to the document. And we also, in appeals to the mission, the board of commissioners, they will not be heard deniable.
Mr. Blakenhart. Thank you. Could we adjust these pages in time here so that we don't have to try to go back?
That's fine.
Okay. Randy, could you please explain the significance of appeals a decision to the board will not be heard deniable?
Well, so the way the process works is on some matters, the simplest matters that come before the planning department are decided by the planning director and with an opportunity to appeal those decisions on up through the planning commission and then the county commission if there is disagreement of the planning director's decisions. So the Board of County Commissioners is the third level of review in that case. And in other matters where the, there is a recommendation from the zoning, planning and zoning commission, you're the second layer of review. So what a lot of jurisdictions do, and it's my recommendation that you follow suit, is to, on those land use cases, that the Board of County Commissioners becomes a appeals court versus a offering another bite at the apple for new testimony to occur before you. The real issue with that is it just gets confusing because you have, someone brings all of their witnesses on one side of the case before the planning commission and puts on all their evidence. And then when you have a new hearing before the Board of County Commissioners, the other side may bring a brand new witness that has not had an opportunity heard before and it just creates confusion in the record. So it's a whole record review standard. In other words, when you see the case, you'll get the entire record from below and you would allow the parties to argue from that entire record and they know they have to put on all of their evidence before the planning commission. They're the experts and they are the ones who have the greatest knowledge of the code itself and their past cases. And it just makes sense to have them making a decision with all the facts and then you reviewing those facts and making a decision based only on that record and not taking new evidence. It can, it can change a hearing from a day to an hour. Now, the way we're going to write the rules is if there is a matter of, it could be discovered below or it's of utmost urgency that there be more evidence added to the record, you will have the opportunity to remand it to the planning board. So in other words, you're gonna protect their due process rights, but you're going to not have to hear the case all over again yourselves, which just makes sense because, like I said, and then you also get inconsistent testimony and it just becomes very messy. So my recommendation would be you become an appellate body where you are reviewing the record below and applying the law as you see it because you are the ultimate planning authority. So you apply the meaning of the code as you see it and with recommendations from the planning commission and your staff and attorney.
Yeah, I think it's a really important, in my mind, good change. It changes the whole character of our hearings that are appealed and like you said, if you want to shorten it because you don't have a whole trial to go through. And then our choices would be to remand or affirm or overrule and what would be the basis of our, what would be our standard of review if we decided to overrule the planning commission?
The way it basically works is all the way through, all appeals of decisions up through the Supreme Court of the state are on a whole record. You review the whole record and if it isn't arbitrary or capricious and it's supported by the law, then you would affirm it. If you think they're going off base and that they haven't considered all the facts or if you think they're not properly applying your ordinance, then you may reverse that.
That's a very appropriate standard for us. Do you, just one more question. So how much more work do you need to do on these particular changes? Because these are red, red, not blue, most of them are mostly red and not...
So what has happened was we spent, meeting that you popped in at for a little while, that meeting was the longest time we've spent together going back and forth and then we did that once more. And so there have been changes coming in after that and they, the staff has made changes to it that I have not yet commented on to them. So we're, you're seeing this at a snapshotting time in the middle of the process. So what we wanted to do is get your input and if, and if there's a strong belief from the commission on anything that we're doing that is off base, then you can give that feedback and we can include that in our, our finalization of...
That's the purpose of today's work study. I just, when you say we're in the middle, then I go back to when we started and if I multiply that by two, I'd be out of office. You get this kind of...
I don't, I don't think, in the middle in the sense since I started, not since you started, because I feel...
I can do that.
We'll try to be a little more efficient than that.
Go ahead, Nathan. Thank you.
So the next section is Article 1 and Article 2. We worked into the designation of the document, page 15, section 1.6.1 through 1.6.2. And what we created were community zones, neighborhood zones, and planning and development zones. And through the document, we removed the over day zone. In Article 2, which is the definitions, we removed terms or uses that are not identified in the document. We clarified terms or uses that were confusing and we identified terms or uses that were missing.
Yes, question Blakenhart. Yes. So could you just explain for us the differences between those three zones? Because that's kind of important. The communities on, the neighborhoods on, and the planning on.
Yes, the neighborhood zones is back in 1994, the Board of Commissioners, and then again in 2004, they worked with the neighborhoods to create so neighborhood associations where they identified their jurisdictions. They also created bylaws and roles and goals and objectives that they wanted within their those jurisdictions. In 2004, we formally adopted, I believe, up to 22 neighborhoods that basically are part of our comprehensive plan at that time of adoption. So through the process, once we completed that, we also got a grant through the state of New Mexico, or we worked, we hired contractors who worked with the neighborhoods to create zoning within those jurisdictions. And over time, that was, when I started, 2006, we started working with those neighborhoods and over time, we helped them create zoning within their neighborhoods. So in 2012, we came before the Board of Commissioners at that time with a new land use regulation, but it turned out to be a whole thing. It was a large document and it was confusing to try to adopt such a big document. So at that time, we separated from both issues for approving the land use regulation for the board and later on, we would bring the zoning back to the Board of Commissioners for adoption. So at this time, we're working on the land use regulation so we could actually accomplish starting the zoning. We have currently lava neighborhoods that are probably ready to go forward with their zoning adoptions, but first we have to get the land use regulations in place and then we work on that aspect of it. So that's the neighborhood zoning aspect of this document. The community zones, we want to, in the whole county, it is considered one zone. It's called county whole area. Basically, you're allowed residential, manufactured homes, home occupation, and anything else that's commercial, you need a special. So we're giving the opportunity for certain communities where they want to have to go and establish a whole neighborhood that are, and to create zoning, we would allow them to just work in their community and identify an area where they would say it's a corridor that has a lot of commercial. They could create a commercial corridor through that area and they wouldn't have to rezone the whole area, they could just concentrate in that community.
Mr. Radio.
I was just gonna add to what Nathan was saying, that the, from my outside perspective, the unique part of your code was that when it was originally established, all of your zoning is this county rural zone and it didn't have other, it wasn't divided into other types of zoning. What happens in many communities with zoning was you divided specific areas into commercial, residential, agricultural, and so forth. You drew lines on the map and you changed those specific zones at that time with your zoning, everybody's county rural, so you could have a situation where it can have, if you, if you are filing an application for your residents to build a home, you don't have to go through a special use or anything and you have a right to have that home. The only thing that is odd about that, I just wanted to note it, is we're not proposing to change it, but what can happen is if you've had special use granted in the past, for example, let's say you have an airport, let's give you a gravel pit, let's say you have a salvage yard, well, someone can still put a home right in the middle of all those by right. So you can get a result that is not a good planning result because you normally would put new homes in the middle of all those commercial uses, but it's, it's allowed as a matter of right by your code as it exists now, which again, I think in practices too, doesn't create too many problems because there's not too many folks who, that's going to be their chosen place to put a house, but it's allowed. So it's just a unique situation.
And the next zone that we have is the town, we've been in lava and we have worked with the town and Taus on their program and I'm gonna have you come up and speak a little bit on that. We actually looked at their program and it pretty much fits within the county, so we're gonna use a lot of their stuff, their information in this document.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager, Councilor, Assistant County Manager. Basically, the concept behind the planning and development zone is to allow for creative flexibility of land use. The whole idea behind it is to allow a developer to cluster housing and to dedicate open space within their development for the use and enjoyment of either the public or the people who are within the development. And in return for allowing the, letting the developer cluster their housing and in return for the developer dedicating open space, there is the possibility and opportunity for the county to relax certain performance standards in the land use regulations, suggest setbacks, lot coverage, things of that nature to allow for these types of developments to happen. And so that's one of the reasons we're proposing the planning and development zone is to allow for this type of development and also to allow for the efficient use of any infrastructure that might be required for these developments. So in other words, in having to, instead of your cookie cutter subdivision or development where you have to provide, you know, miles and miles, well, not miles, but hundreds of feet of water, lines, sewer lines, a lot of infrastructure like that, if you cluster the development... you allow for a more efficient use of your resources. Like, say, if you have to be on wells, this allows for, you know, a more efficient use of your infrastructure by clustering. So at this point, uh, Chair, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I stand ready. Questions you might have on the concept of the PUD and why we're proposing it?
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Any more questions?
After Mr. Paeva and Mr. Sanchez make their presentation, then we'll open it up to the public cast.
Mr. Chairman, um, if you could explain the increased time limit for abandonment of use from one hundred eighty days to three sixty-five?
Okay. Yeah. Moving on, uh, in Article Three, we have devil's overview, page thirty, section three, point one, point one. We establish res, um, the permitting process, uh, which is a residential zoning clearance, a non-residential zoning clearance, an administrative permit, special use permit, and a major development permit overview. So we explained those sections in that area. Okay, the next section is the permit exemptions and non-conformous uses, uh, page thirty-nine through forty, sections three point one, point one, and through three point, three point two. Um, we added permit exemptions, clearing the grubbies for non-magical activities of fifty to fifty yards or less. We also increased the timing for abandonment of use from one hundred eighty days to three hundred and sixty-five days. Um, staff feels that because of the economy and stuff, a hundred and eighty days, if a business goes, say, because of the economy, they go out of business, three months or six months comes very quickly for them. Um, it doesn't really give them opportunity to, uh, we'd rather work with them to try to get back, um, working again. Uh, six months just doesn't seem like a timeframe where we could really work with them to help them bring back their business if they want to continue with that same type of business.
So this, Mr. Chairman, applies only to businesses?
Yes.
Uh, not homes, you know, say, say, for example, if there's a, there's a place in Rogers, um, near the Trading Post Cafe that has been up for sale for umpteen years, and it finally sold recently, I believe, um, there's going to be a, a new restaurant or something going around, and I'm sure you're aware of it. Um, this would apply to that then?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a, say, type of, it's consistent with the per use, that's there, so it just tracks.
If it was a restaurant, someone buys it, um, abandoned, um, they're going to want to go in and turn it into a restaurant again, then they wouldn't have to go through the entire permit process?
Yeah.
Okay.
And further down, where down we is that non-residential review process, which basically is zoning clearance, where we review, as long as I read the performance standards that are outlined in that section, as long as I read those performance standards, we will approve that in-house, administrative, asking for residences. So that's streamlined process for them.
That, Mr. Chairman, should make it a little bit more easier, you know, it should help the economy as well, because a lot of times, people get discouraged when you have to, when they finally realize that they have to go through all this, you know, red tape to, to be able to establish something.
Yes, and that's our goal, to, to streamline the non-legal processes, so original business could establish themselves, not faster.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. Corro, Mr. Accio. Uh, Mr. Al, maybe just elaborate a little bit more. Mr. Sanchez did a good job in explaining to you what the reason is behind this amendment to this proportion of the land use regulations. I just want to clarify a little bit more. Not only is the person subject to having to come into compliance with a, with a new zoning permit, if the person, if the structure is illegal, non-conformous, meaning that this was in existence before, all these regulations, including, uh, street regulations within the International Building Codebook, it means that that structure would also need to meet International Building Codebook requirements before they'd be able to reopen again. And we felt that a hundred and eighty days was just too small of a window, and that, that, as Mr. Sanchez indicated, some businesses, by the time they put it out on the market, by the time they find a tenant, the public puts you close to a year, some businesses over a year. And so we felt that it was not a good idea to try to effectively punish some of the people who are trying to reestablish a business or a similar use in that, in this, that pretty simply does a similar type of activity.
And another section, we're down further, we have created a standardized streamlined review for consistent use. So say, a business goes over the, even the year, if it's consistent, we're still going to allow them to go through, to go to, um, to be reviewed through a non-residential process, as long as it's consistent with what you're doing. And as Mr. Beal stated, that they would still have to comply with the building codes.
Thank you.
And in permit effective duration, page forty-three, section three point four, point two, this is the time acts we give permits. Um, we created a completion time for planning and development, which will refer to that. Okay, amendments to Article Four, permit requirements, page forty-three, section four point, four point one. Uh, we created references to sections within the regulations for supplemental performance standards that pertain to the described uses under review. We created manufactured home requirements. We created uses requiring non-residential permits. We moved the public facilities structures, including the non-residential air purers, halli path, group homes, or assisted movement to special use permit review from administration. And we also created, uh, for commercial solar generation, shall be required a special use permit, and are exempt for major development permit.
On that, I was wondering, does that mean potentially that, um, my understanding that solar generation process is, is one of the longest ones that we have, so does this mean that shortens that time because of the, uh, the concept isn't a, hopefully not controversial issue, and it's something for the better of the community, if you're in favor of renewable energy? So this kind of streamlines that process?
Yes. Currently, uh, most projects, solar projects are going to be in excess or are going to be the criteria of a major development. And when, in the major development review process, basically goes through two public hearings. It goes through a public hearing before the planning commission, who gives a recommendation to the border commissioners, and then it goes through a public hearing before the border commissioners, who give a final decision on the project. So by just requiring a special use, it'll just go through one public hearing, and the planning commission will make that final decision. Or, and so this, you know, you know.
So, uh, just to add it up, I think what happened with the solar provision, it looked like was, it was adopted by itself as a standalone amendment back in the day. And, and what happens sometimes when you do that is it takes it out of step with everything else because it seemed so special at the time, but it really is not much different than many other things. And so what the amendments do is treats it like any other type of application, which I think is a good thing.
Right.
Oh, question like that. Um, so this, this may well be relevant in the future, because Crystal Electric has plans for a number of solar ray developments, and so, um, I'm glad that, uh, you know, you guys are working on making that a, an efficient and effective process. Um, was there a thought of making that an administrative review, and why was that connected, I guess, so?
Um, and that, because of the size of the project, it still has a big impact on the neighborhood. And just like the airport, staff feels that, it gives a public an opportunity to voice their opinions at that public hearing. An administrative review, basically, we, they don't get that opportunity. So we feel, even though it's a, for the good of the, more likely it's good for the area, it still has that concept of people should still have a voice in the same, the public should have a voice in that type of project.
And, and are there setback limitations there, similar to those ones with the towers? I think that was an issue too, that maybe the setback requirements was overly restricted, but I know I've heard that.
It's like a hundred feet?
I'm going to have to look at the specifics, because in the special uses on our table, it's, um, with, yes, on special use.
Limitations as well.
Through, they were both our limitations chart, um, but they probably have specific ones within the supplemental requirements. We have to, we couldn't review those.
Because I, I'm almost certain that's a hundred feet right now setbacks, and I think that's a little excessive.
Okay. Review those setbacks, make sure, Mr. Beal, that they move along.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. Sanchez. Uh, Mr. Chairman, you are correct. In, not only in the, in the section of that Mr. Sanchez alluded to, where we have our setback table, we also have section four point twelve, which is specific to solar generation, which in addition to apply for the special use permit, individuals who are doing the solar ray application will also need to comply with this particular section. The setbacks in this particular section are fifty feet. Fifty feet is a setback requirement. And, and if we, we all believe that that is a little restrictive, we could quote, eliminate that fifty foot setback, and, and here more so, if the setback requirement's in the table and the chart. The table and chart, I believe, is twenty feet from property lines, if you're less than twenty feet in size, if you're more than twenty feet in size for commercial, I believe it's increasing thirty feet or something like that, but we view that. And, and if that's the direction they would like to put, we'd reduce the setback requirement. And I think we're receptive. We're receptive in the sense that, again, these solar rays are basically non-radcliffe. The setbacks or requirement are really stringent. We recognize that in our land use regulations, especially at full tilt, most of these solar rays are six to eight feet in height. And so to have a fifty foot setback is really excessive.
Uh, question like that. Okay, so the way you get, you know, admittedly, fifty foot is restrictive, but the way you are accounting for that is discretion within the department to be able to relax those. And if that's the case, I'd like to know if our attorney has any discomfort with that level of discretion.
Funny you should ask that. Um, it, it's a give and take, um, because there are many circumstances. Topography, for example, changes everything. I mean, it may be a close, it may be within the fifty feet, but there may be hills that were in danger. So I, I, there has to be that discretion, but I think it should be discretion limited to effectively measurable issues like topography, like land site, and things like that.
And, and that may argue for just flat out lowering the setback requirement for solar, and instead of having to go through, um, the discretionary process, unless, as Randy states, there are, you know, there's physical, uh, limitations that, that would, uh, almost require. So, my suggestion is to look at those setbacks for solar, because fifty foot is still too much, and, you know, they're not very high, et cetera, et cetera. So if you guys, I would like to see, uh, yeah, look at that and see what you think about it. The, the only other issue that I had heard had to do with the reclamation bonds somehow being appropriated, you know, the specifics on it.
Um, we, we are going to, uh, we're looking at that section, and it, it seems, um, it's a unique feature of the code to have a reclamation bond anywhere, because it, it could go out as much as life of the use, you know, twenty, twenty-five years, and that isn't something that is really bonded for. Bonds are used in the construction process to make sure you get what you want very quickly. So, so I, uh, unless we can come up with a workable system, it seems that the reclamation bond process should simply be as it is with everything else. Uh, it's, it's operationally tied to the business, and if you enter into agreements with the business, you can make a requirement that they remove it if they quit using it. But other than that, I mean, if it's just a private use for private purposes, we really don't ever put on similar reclamation laws.
I agree with you guys, it is prohibitive, and it makes it really hard to do much.
Okay, then next amendments in Article Four are residential zoning clearance application, page forty-four, section four point two point one, four point two point four. We identified appeal process for zoning clearance applications by the applicant, and we moved that parties can appeal this process. Uh, residential zoning can perform the standards, uh, pages forty-six and forty-eight, section four point three point one. We identified review process for high, very high well-known urban interface areas. We identified review process for midnight, we residential zoning clearance permit, and clarified development standards in our administration. And continuing in Article Four, we worked on the non-residential zoning clearance under Australian and special use application review process, pages forty-nine through sixty-two, sections four point five point one through four point eight point one. We established a non-residential zoning clearance application process. We established an appeal process for non-residential zoning clearance permits by the applicant. We established a terrain map review for special, for senior dominant permits. We established a storm and drainage review for non-residential and administrative permits. Um, we're centralizing the amendments table to just one place in the documents, so it's not confusing. And that, what's on the amendments table is consistent. In zoning areas, applicants with non-residential proposals shall contact the neighborhood association for the proposed project area prior to submitting their applications to the planning department to coordinate reading with the neighborhood association and with adjacent property owners for their review. And in the development compatibility standard, non-residential zoning clearance reviews are exempt from the use compatibility standard provision.
Question like that. And that last one's a big one, if you flush that out a little bit for us, explain it.
Yes. Um, in the compatibility standards, we have the use standard for, um, when they create their zoning, they're going to create zones. And within those zones, they're going to have, uh, what come, allowances, um, non-permitted uses, and special use uses. So if it's a permitted use, basically, what we're saying is that use is allowed, that type of use is allowed in that zone. So therefore, they would just have to go through a non-residential review process where planning staff, as long as they read the performance standards, would approve that process. So streamlined process for, for basically commercial use, that allowed within that zone.
So in any area within Tows County that actually has a zoning, uh, construct, right now there's only two, presumably there'll be more eventually, within any of those areas that do have the traditional zoning, if you want to do a commercial project, and under that grid, there's a loud use for that commercial project, um, then you don't have to go through and, and prove that it's a compatible use for the area.
Yes.
Because that's already decided. And the reason we have that compatible use for the area standard is because most of Tows County is not zoned. So that's why we have it. It's a safeguard for everything that's not zoned, but we take it away to those areas that are.
And if I may, that really will, the community zone, for example, can be placed in those areas that you, you want to develop and the community wants to develop as commercial areas, and then you don't have to go through the special use process to get the, to, to go forward with it. You just have to comply with the normal building code and drainage
It's a safeguard for everything that's not zoned, but we take it away to those areas that are.
And if I may, that really will, the community zone, for example, can be placed in those areas that you want to develop and the community wants to develop as commercial areas. And then you don't have to go through the special use process to get them, to go forward and build. You just have to comply with the normal building code and drainage policies.
Right, once you make that determination, a particular use is appropriate for that spot. As we fill that out, it makes it a lot easier to develop a lot shorter route to the eventual permit. Should be helpful.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
I was going to wait until you had completed your presentation, but I want to talk about the wetlands. Your change in language is not clear. And what I hear, four point three point one I, that you're allowing wetland development where before we did not. Because on page sixty-four, it refers to wetlands and that no wetlands can be developed. But this new language allows for a plan to protect the wetland developments, but developments on tracks. Can you just explain this because it sounds like we're lessening our?
Yeah, in our regulations, we cannot really restrict or tell people that they can't use portion of the land to regulate those. So in when that area, just like in floodplain areas, we have to give allowances for people to be able to develop their property. So in this, we didn't have anything. We just basically said, if you're in a wetland, you have to get a special use permit. So if you have a residential home, you have wetlands on your property, you'd have to come in and go through a special use, but the community can't. And they get engineers, show us how you're going to develop that so you're not totally taking out the wetlands. So they would still be able to develop, or it would just be another process and as we really find it's unsafe for health.
I don't agree. I think we should not allow development in wetlands, period. And that's how the former language was read and you're telling me we can't do it. But I'm saying, I think we can if we're going to protect our natural resources and stop development that's going to cover up wetlands. They're going to bring in topsoil, they're going to ruin the wetlands. So I do not agree besides this language is very unclear. I mean, section I.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner O'Donnell, actually, a lot of the wetlands are under the jurisdiction of the Corps of Engineers. And we work with them, they do allow certain types of development on wetlands. They have criteria that they have to meet. So there, a lot of the wetlands, and we have a process in place now that we didn't have, where we're in full contact with that jurisdiction. And they come down and they dispute the wetlands. And if it falls under their jurisdiction, they take over the permit review process.
It still sounds like if we have ordinances that can be stronger than state law or some codes, I think we need to do everything to protect the wetlands and that we should not allow it, period. I'm sorry. It's just too bad that people buy land and then take away vital habitat and take away our water resources and I do not agree with this at all.
And within, Mr. O'Donnell, yeah, what we're proposing is pretty consistent with what the Corps of Engineers have. That as long as there not disturbing more than ten percent of that wetland, we're going to allow per the regulations to be able to put a house on the property. A lot of these areas that are defined as wetlands, if you go out there and if you really evaluate them, they're not mapped correctly. So we want to be careful by utilizing these maps that we really study. When someone comes in for a permit, we really study that area and make sure it is a wetland. So that's our goal in this where we're trying to develop something where we didn't have, we just basically mentioned wetlands, but we didn't have no type of process to really review. And now that's what we're trying to accomplish, is having a review process for wetlands where we can work with constituents to be able to either place their house on, if they're just, if the wetland is in a place where it just can't be disturbed. But at least we're giving them a way of showing us that they, they're going to give the effort to show that they can disturb that wetland where it can still continue to prosper.
If you take ten percent, you know, you made some remark about ten percent. Somebody's got a half an acre of land, that's a lot of land you're taking away from wetlands. I don't, I'm just telling you, I don't like it. I want you to put language in there that's going to restrict wetlands in, period. And if, if there's a way to make those allowances based on certain conditions, maybe. But we have to protect our resources here.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, Commissioners, I, Mr. O'Donnell, I just wanted to come in and clarify that within existing regulations, land use regulations, which is orders two thousand fifteen dash two, development in wetlands is allowed. And so that requires a special use permit. What we are trying to do is we're trying to clarify the process for somebody who wants to develop within the wetlands. Our fear and you, and by no means is, is what I just wanted to use as an example. You indicated that sometimes individuals purchase a piece of property. A lot of times it's a territory. Sometimes individuals acquire a piece of property, but it's all their own also. And so our fear is that if we prohibit development in wetlands, we're effectively taking individuals' right to own that piece of property.
Michelle, okay, but you're striking the language that says, "In order to preserve the crucial water recharge capacity and wildlife habitat of the county's criteria of wetland resources, any proposed development on a track which contains non-manmade wetlands shall be limited to the development of areas within the applicant's track that are not wetlands." I want that to stay in there.
Yes, that will stay in there. But if it, there's no, if the wetland, it covers the whole property, we've got to work with them and try to be able so they can use their land in the way that applicants or constituents want it, utilize their land.
No.
It's, we're basically making that land unusable.
I'm sorry, I don't agree with that. I'm sorry people buy wetlands and don't think about saving our natural resources. And I don't know how many applications that is, but there's a track by Fred Baca Park. Maybe we should, we should buy that so some developer doesn't come in and clear most of the wetlands and get the proper permits because we've deemed it legal. No, I don't think, I don't agree.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
And Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. That's exactly what I was going to inquire about is I believe that particular track of land across from Fred Baca Park is in the town limits. I was wondering how the town addresses this particular issue. I haven't done any research on that parcel. It used to be one large parcel and it appears like it was divided in half. It's got two different real estate signs on it. One is the land that is at least semi-buildable and the rest of it is purely wetland and that's on the downside of the river, which is the Rio Fernando. And of course, those waters all go back into the Rio Grande eventually. So they do require the permitting that you're talking about from the state or the federal level, right? And so just kind of wondering how something like that is addressed by the town of Taus. Is it something that we can kind of jump off of?
Oh, you know, there was a cabinet of the town of Taus. Thank you, Mr. Sanchez.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, my information might be a little dated because I haven't been with the town of Taus for about four years now. But from my last reading of their land use regulations, they do not address wetlands at all.
At all.
At all.
So I place where on the forefront of that.
That's correct, yes. Yes, so.
Any questions? Commissioner Black.
If you eliminate all economic value through the regulations and you do have to compensate them for their land, and that's, that's one of the things that the planning department is trying to avoid here. But they're doing it responsibly with some reasonable regulations that still protect their wetlands.
Well, I mean, commissioners, the issue is you can't take all of the value of anyone's property that is there. And so the way the wetlands issue works is if a property has been declared as wetlands by the federal government, for example, then our regulations don't take that away because it's already regulated by the federal government. If there is a piece of that land that is buildable and it's not part of the federal wetland, then we can't take that away from them without compensation because there's nothing preventing building from occurring on the non-wetland portion. So that's the kind of the dance you have to do with those properties that have both, both wetland area and, and buildable area. So we just have to make sure we can find that balance. All we have to do is work with them so that we don't get the scenario that you're afraid of, which would be allowing, implying that we're allowing building. Because we couldn't do it anyway because the federal government won't allow us to. But implying that they can and getting into a fight with folks, you know, giving them some, some idea that they're going to be able to develop wetlands that they couldn't use to develop.
And Mr. Chairman, I, I just, it would be nice if the town were to, now we did have the money, you know, the money to buy those properties on coming over there and would make a beautiful extension to the park. But, and I think to myself, every time I drive through there, I think, well, you know, who would want to buy this on this as someone that's really interested in some sort of a, creating some sort of a conservation estimate?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I just also wanted to add and to follow up to Sanchez's comment. A lot of times, yes, we rely on the mapping that exists already, but we have learned that the mapping is not always accurate. Our Corps of Engineers comes over to the site inspection, helps us in doing the site inspection to make a determination as to whether or not the mapping that is presently identified is accurate or not. We have been in a couple of instances recently, the assistance of our Corps of Engineers has been able to establish that the property is not within the wetlands.
Perfect example is right over here in Southland. There's one home, one of the Chicago family that is considered flood zone. He's hired in his neighbors on all four directions and he's flood zone. He creates flood insurance and he, he's hired in anywhere else, but there's wetlands. There are at one time, wetlands behind his house and so they put him in that. And there's nothing even to do with him, he's wasting twenty-eight hundred dollars a year for flood insurance. So it just, and there's no appeal process. He was told he could go appeal to the mayor and it's not covered and so the mayor couldn't have ruled it. So I mean, it's a very painful thing and it's absolutely, absolutely true. But it's obviously an error. You've looked at it for me, Rudy's looked at it for me and I've given it to you. He goes into town because they don't cover it. But I just scratched my head when I looked at that. What a weird pocket of resignation of flood zone.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, as a salute suggestion, now that the town of Taus has the Taus County book in management to corner there, it might be a good idea for this individual to reach out to Mr. Corne and through the firm maps, the flood insurance rate maps, even best in Loma. Basically that is an amendment to flood insurance rate maps. And this is something that is a little bit involved, but it only requires, it only requires you to hire an engineer and basically dispute the existing mapping that the flood insurance rate maps have provided, that FEMA has provided. And in some instances, as indicated, is it well worth your while to spend the twelve hundred dollars on flood insurance that you're paying nearly, spend the twelve hundred dollars to have a change so you don't have to pay that flood insurance? So it would be very appropriate for them to work with Mr. Corne to let it win in Loma and just into the flood insurance rate map.
So, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
The mapping that is the assessors on this did a flyover. Will that help to resolve the issues you have with wetlands? And because we've talked about, we need to have planning department share that aerial mapping. So will that aerial, aerial mapping help?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner O'Donnell, I haven't looked at that data. But they would have to be clearly identified either by GPS or they, you'd have to map them out separately. If you do a flyover to identify certain features on the, on the ground, you would have to identify and draw out to the field and critically identify. You could find that they look like a wetland or, oh, but we, for our mapping purposes, we've been working with NRCS. They have great wetland mapping that they've already done that work. So that's the mapping that we're using. And like we're finding, like any mapping, sometimes it's incorrect. But at least we have that, that product available to us and they're willing to work with us and show us how it works, so.
Where are the wetlands in Taus County?
If you go up the Front Row Road, basically all that area is, a lot of it's wetland.
And Kai Home?
Yeah.
And then in Pinasco?
A lot of that area, if you find on those maps, it has been in wetlands.
What about Questa? I'm just trying to get a handle on what, how much.
We can't release a new area.
What about, what about Pinasco?
Pinasco, I haven't looked at any.
It'd be Redarte area, I think.
But, yeah.
What about Taus Canyon? I mean, don't we have wetlands in Taus Canyon?
No, basically they're in the floodplain. They have a lot of floodplain areas. Well, we haven't really had projects in those areas to really identify. But we have the capability of being able to access maps in those areas to identify wetlands. And then, of course, we just don't take the map. Information, we have to conduct site visits to confirm what's on.
Okay, thank you.
So continuing with Article Four, one of the suggestions from the legal is to reorganize the sections in the document. So, so a transition from residential zoning clearance to non-residential zoning clearance, administrative, special use, major development, applications, process and performance standards. So I restructured the document so it feels a lot better. When people are reading that, it just goes from section to section. And it looks a lot better. Before it was kind of confusing where certain information was. It seems like it feels a lot better.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Mr. Sheriff, I may, and following up on what Nathan was saying. Basically, all of them, we were not adding or deleting anything. It was just the general section and all kinds of things had been added over time, not in any sequence. So we're just making, putting a sequence to it so that's easier to read for the public, people who can do business and develop in Taus Canyon.
In Taus Canyon, Article Four, we were done the supplemental application review and supplemental performance standards in section, page sixty-seven through ninety-seven, section four point nine point one point four, and through four point thirteen point six. What these are, is we have a special use process or say, for example, a wetland development. If somebody comes in, wants to do a residential home, they have to meet the performance standards outlined in that section of the zoning clearance process. If, say, they have, you find that that wetland, we're going to refer to this section in the supplemental. So they have to meet all performance standards within the standardized process for zoning clearance. Plus, they have to come over to this section and meet the requirements within the supplemental area. And that goes for different types of processes such as the solar, which is a good example where they would have to meet all the requirements of special use performance standards, plus they'd have to meet the performance standards outlined in this supplemental section. Now, what we did is in this section, we established the residential wetland development requirements as you just discussed. requirements, as you just discussed. We established vendor permit requirements. We established manufactured home regulation section. We established temporary shelter requirements for manufactured homes and recreational vehicles. We established review of clearing and grubbing for non-agricultural activity. Training commercial solar generation review shall be reviewed by a special use permit. And our examples of major development permits regarding the size, per footage and cost. And we remove section requiring insurance, financial guarantee fees and the inspections for these are required in our special use application process for solar projects.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Can you please include in your definitions grubbing? Because it is not in your definitions and you refer to grubbing. Again, in my district, there was a gentleman who cleared his land a couple of years ago. It was in the flood plain. I think you know who I'm talking about. When the wind blew, all that dust blew into the neighborhood. And I live next to, second example, I live next to someone who came in, cleared his whole land, and now when the dust blows, thank God the wind isn't blowing into my trailer, but I watch the dust blow into the neighborhoods on Herdner and into my neighbors to the east of me. And we have to have, because of the dust issue and the health and safety of our residents, we have to have some language that people understand that unless they're going to immediately plant or do something, that they should not grub their land completely down. This is a dust issue. And I want to see language in here that protects the residents. It's a health and safety issue.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner O'Donnell, yes, we have a prayer now. They would have to come in permit. If they're a non-agricultural activity, they're going to have to come in with a permit or we could make sure that they're doing it responsibly, that they're, they're not just clearly grubbing, that they could actually seed. They don't have to explain where they're doing the property, they just can't remove the grubs.
And how is the time limited, once they grub, how soon they have to seed?
Well, we don't know what, we don't have time limits on the seeding, but they'll have to explain what they're doing and then we will be able to give them their time limits and explain to them what the process is.
You will oppose time limits individually on a case-by-case basis?
Well, we'll have to review, well, they're doing on that project and will require some type of seed or regulation. We could create a regulation process for the seed, for clearly grubbing.
Okay, now here's the other thing. You've defined ziriscap in your definitions, but there's no place in this document that encourages ziriscap and the forbidding of grass lawns, which I think in a time of drought is unwise for any developer or any even residential property owner to put in grass during a drought. So where is ziriscap in this document, other than the definitions?
We, we identify ziriscaping in the doc, ziriscaping in the document. Mostly where we utilize that is in our conditions of approval in our special use permits. We, we've kind of negotiated with the applicant that to utilize ziriscaping on the project, but we don't require to have any type of requirements or we force the applicants to.
But don't you think in times of drought, we need to start having some mandatory conditions put in place?
And those are, where we create the zoning, I think we could be more specific in those zone areas where we can't actually create those kind of development standards.
Mr. Arno. Mr. Chairman, Commissioner O'Donnell, it may be appropriate to look at legislation separate from zoning code because it's hard in a zoning code that applies all of the time to address matters like drought. It's kind of like the fire restrictions. It makes sense when the conditions allow for it. You can have watering restrictions, you know, you can do other things if you are facing a drought that is affecting your water supply or anything. You can put those, you can, you can legislate that. It's just I'm not sure this is the spot for it, unless it is the community policy that you want to do only drought tolerant planting and perhaps you could do it here, but I'm not sure that, I'm not sure if that's, that's where you want to go.
To many of us, I have zero statement. Because, as I pointed out.
Vice Chair.
And I think that's, I think what Mr. Arno says is fine. In addition to that, if you're, I think, pointing, that just may be that if you're looking at the developer in their proposal, killing out their revenue, plus their community or whatever they decide to do, that there's going to be dedication of some kind of water act to that, to be able to put that development down. If not, then, you know, it's going to be part of, they're going to be part of the main infrastructure of the community watering system and that's something that has to be also considered. But I think the way you look at it, if we're going to be clustering, creating this kind of thing, they want, do the beautification without having ziriscaping, putting grass and shrubbed and trees, then part of their application may be adding dedicated water sources without it being a burden to the system. Then you're not going to have anything to worry about, drought conditions or, I'm not so excited with the issue also. You know, that's something that can be discussed down the road, it doesn't have to be a, okay, your document tonight, today, but it would be something that we have considered as we're looking at what, um, those applications.
And that's exactly how the subdivision process works. I mean, development is subdivision, he's got, he or she has to prove up the amount of water that they have available and then they get some discretion as to what they plan out.
Well, I just, as long as we're talking about drought, I think we should have in these regulations, no swimming pools. I don't think anybody should be building a swimming pool in an arid climate. And I think we need to restrict that as well. And if we have to pass a resolution that encourages ziriscaping, encouraging, encourages water restrictions, because we don't really have any authority with mutual domestics and private well owners, but if we can just get a resolution that encourages this, at least it'll send a message. Because if you're saying we don't have any authority to do this, then maybe we need to just have a resolution that encourages this, so the commission takes a stand on, on climate change and drought. If you're saying we need it in another document, we've heard this before where there's, the other document is never created.
Well, and, Commissioner, just to be clear, I'm not saying you don't have the authority. You clearly have the authority to address conditions in the community that need legislating. The question will be, how are you doing that and where, what sort of process that's appropriate in? The subdivision process is where you actually see what's going to be placed on the ground and you can regulate. If, if you, if this, if the drought that we have now becomes the norm, then it's entirely appropriate to regulate how, for communities to regulate how water's being used and, or it can be done naturally through the limitations that the water system will place or use because they don't have enough water. So it can happen in many ways and don't, I just, I don't, I want to be clear, if you have authority, it's just that it's not necessarily a zoning issue.
All right, well, maybe at some point, if the commission agrees, Mr. Arno, you look at how we can get the message out.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Commissioner O'Donnell, I just wanted to follow up quickly a little bit more about water conservation and allude to the promise that Mr. Sanchez referred to presently within the existing land use regulations and more specifically when an individual receives an administrative permission, special use permit, or regional development permit. We do have present land use that indicates advanced maintenance, addressing aesthetics, water conservation, erosion, erosion control and any blocking requirements. So we do, when we meet with individuals and we have a pre-application conference, we try to convey the message that green is a lot better, that green isn't the way to go. And we try, as Mr. Sanchez indicated, when we have a pre-application conference, we try to explain to them that we are in a drought top, in a drought area and that we encourage drought tolerant material for landscaping.
Could you at least, what you just referred to, this section, could you at least put a line in, is ziriscaping is encouraged? I mean, because you've got it in the definitions, but there's no place in this document that refers to ziriscaping.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, I think that's what I'm hoping.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can I, when you're here for them, has it already been addressed or is it?
It hasn't really been addressed.
If you state your name for the record.
Yeah, my name's Jay. Thank you. I didn't understand because they're talking about, we're talking about neighborhood associations. I live in the Sunday of the Vista Road at the very end and it's part of Estes Estates. Next door was the field. It's now, all become residential. The reason I came today was a year ago, Gabe came to my house, do you remember, is the neighbor next door, I'm sorry, I don't know if it's an acre or less than an acre. It's probably less than an acre. And he has put as close to my house as he possibly could ride against, he said, like about a thirty, about a thirty foot corral. We had two horses and two cows. The methane and the flies, the methane comes into my house, you know, with the wind, it's like, my house smells like a urinal. It's not all the time, it's, you know, specifically in the Sunday, my windows are open. And so when I was, you know, when I said to Gabe a year ago, and you told me that all of Tous County is considered agricultural, and now what you see.
Many portions.
And, yeah, and so when, when an area is like completely surrounded by residential, what I'm sort of, what I'm, you know, wanting to suggest is that if somebody's going to have livestock, if horses don't have the same smell as livestock, and is that there should be a minimum acreage, like five acres or something like that, that when, when an area is residential for somebody to have half acre or an acre and to be having livestock, it's, it's a health problem and it's also, I mean, it's to live there. It's like, I can't imagine anywhere else in the United States that they would allow something like that to happen. I mean, this person also, like, this.
O'Donnell.
O'Donnell, oh, he just, when he moved in, he totally cut his land. It was like he took everything off. And then he put up a tin trailer, which was an old trailer, and I think it was like, like one year allowed to be there. He, he then got a thing, permit to put in six stables, which he's now enclosed, by the way, and turned into living or something, some kind of residential things. And then he's put in this thirty foot corral where he has two horses, two cows, the two horses now have babies. And it's right up against my property and, you know, all the properties around have like one acre. So it's not like, you know, quarter acre, quarter acre. To me, that doesn't feel like that that should be allowed.
Okay, thank you, Nathan. That's for you. I just, I'm sure I could have heard specifically, I didn't, just pick her out, you made it more.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for that. And Jay.
Um, Jay. We're not really addressing these things. And these regulations, agriculture is exempt and all activities are exempt. But we do have specific ordinances that deal with, like the bee issues. We have the animal control and I don't, I haven't read a, but those are places we can have this type of regulatory, because these are animals, basically. So maybe that's somewhere we could, I would suggest that we look into the ordinance and maybe deal with that aspect in there. Now, if they're exempt, agricultural animals are exempt in the ordinance also. Another issue, the solid waste for the, the animal waste, I'll look back, be addressed in the solid waste issue, but what we're dealing in the land use is for residential development, commercial development, and in our, it's agricultural.
That's, that's what I'm bringing up is I live in a residential area. I don't live in a farm. I live in a residential area and all around is just residence. And I've asked, you know, I tried like a year ago, I asked Gabe and I pulled up the planning department, nothing gets done. Now I could take a, I could have taken a lawsuit because I have a lawyer friend who said that if I, within a year, I might have taken a lawsuit because I was there before this person. But I, I don't have the money to do it and also I, I don't want to have that, the consequences with this person next door who has a history in the past of drought dealing and stuff to have that against me. So it's, you know, it's like I live alone, I don't want to have that type of energy. So I'm asking the planning and the zoning and the commissioners to give some help in this, because I don't think that that's the correct thing that it should be allowed. I mean, I could see if somebody has five acres.
Well, Mr. Chairman, again, in your definitions, you've got public nuisance, but you do not have private nuisance. And I would like to see language that identifies private nuisance. And if that would include someone who, whose cows, he does, the corrals aren't cleaned, language, you know, unless we're back to what Mr. Randy Arno says, is we've got to do a complete new ordinance. But when I think of private nuisance, I also think of abandoned structures that have debris and buildings are open and it's disgusting and we have no authority now, no teeth, to go in and clean up that property on our own. So I think, you know, unless we have to create another ordinance, I'd like to see a definition of private nuisance in this language and, you know, not to take away someone's private property right to have cows, but can they keep their corral clean? Can they do something that will stop the fly infestation and the smell? Because this is relating to the health and welfare of our residents.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner O'Donnell, Commissioner, you know, your comments are very well paying, Commissioner O'Donnell, this is why we have a question. What is the wish of the commission? What, if that's guidance or instruction that you're giving to this applicable Soviet? But one of the things I just want to speak to, to Mr. Bear's, Mr. Bear's comments, is that, as Mr. Sanchez indicated, under our existing land use regulations, agriculture is exempt. And, and it goes on to, the definition of agriculture, it does go, go on to indicate that the storing of livestock is considered to be exempt as well. And so the question obviously is, if we start looking at it and incorporating or creating some new legislation, some new legislative, some new ordinances, my, my personal belief, my personal opinion, I would be able to, Mr. Arno, is that whatever's present there, we can view as grandfathered. And, and so it might be more worthwhile to possibly look at going in the direction that you're suggesting, that the individuals have to keep it clean or something along those lines, because it'd be really difficult for us to come back after the fact, but the uses are good established and basically say, hey, you got to do something else.
It's, it's what I'm saying, it's like one acre or half an acre, you know, it's, it's very simple to say, okay, agricultural should be, you know, with livestock, should be on a minimum of five acres or four acres, something like that, but to be in the middle of a residential area.
Mr. People had a comment on that. And Rudy, I seem to remember that the town had something in their.
And Rudy, I seem to remember that the town had something in their ordinance, a narrow acreage for, do you remember that?
Mr. Chairman, if I may be forward, before Mr. Kedda brought it up, and I just want to follow up with all your expectations, Barry, yes, she has her own concerns, but certainly, I think the concern here is, if we come forward now and try to institute a half acre, one acre minimum, or whatever the case might be, the argument, the point that I'm trying to make is this person would be viewed as a grandfather use, which would be difficult to have a person to do something, they're better adhere to the new requirements, as long as the dust are made.
And that's a problem. He's had it for a year. It's a problem, and it's like, I don't know how to get help for that.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I do recall that, you know, there's very limited zoning designations in the town for residential agriculture, and if I remember correctly, the minimum lot sizes for that would be three acres. And you are correct, Mr. Chairman, in saying that there is, they do impose limits on the number of farm animals you can have within that three acres. I don't recall the exact limits, but there are some limits, you know, that they impose for the, within that zoning designation for residential agriculture. If you'd like, I can do research on that and provide you with that information. If we do go in a direction to address Mr. Ferris' concerns, that he knows to have that.
Okay, Mr. Chairman. We'll do that.
Mr. Rady. Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, you do have the authority to regulate those issues. It's a matter of, in your community, the assessment has to be done of what areas are appropriate for what uses. It's been historically an agricultural community, and that's why we ended up, I think, probably where we are, is historically, that was the use in the county zone, was mixed agricultural and residential. So with times changing, that is something that in particular areas, for example, the half lot, half acre lot size, I mean, obviously, that's getting very small, and you are very close to your neighbors, and you can regulate that earlier. It was in a similar situation, because it is very urban in parts of the county, so therefore, you can regulate those types of agricultural uses based upon lot size, based on you can do setbacks, you can do other things like that, and number of animals. So you can do all those things, it's a matter of what is the appropriate for the community. And secondly, with what, with what the planning director said, you do have to place some kind of grandfather for a use of land. If it's only a use of land, like a corral, that isn't the primary use of the land, the primary use is residence. So it is okay to do, it's called an amortization period. You give people notice, you change the law, and you give people notice that the law has been changed, and after appropriate amount of time, based upon the intensity of the use, like a year or two years, your use is going to have to go away after that period of time. So it is addressable, it's, I don't know, part of what happens with, when you're taking on an amendment of the zoning code, is it's the ever-expanding world, because there are so many different issues covered by zoning. So you guys will need to decide how far you want us to go with these changes now, and Commissioner O'Donnell brought a very good issue, which was nuisances. All of those things can be addressed as well, it's a matter of the will of the commission. And is this the time to take those on? It's your decision. We can, we can take those on, but it's going to be another big lift to add on to what is already being done on these changes of uses and trying to streamline the system that planning is undertaken.
And just to add, this area has been the Rancho's Neighborhood Association, so we will be able to visit that issue, and the zoning in that area. And we're not without the neighborhoods. These are issues that we can describe, and there's only regulations. Go forward with the main course.
All right. That does seem to be a solution, you know, to go forward with zoning, and then within that zone, you know, structure, protect residences, and all kinds of things. And thanks very much to Mr. Adio for describing the amortization process. I tell you, you know, you could do it, which Commissioner Adio suggested to me in a whisper, and I didn't even know you could do it, but that's really useful information. And so, there's nothing to be here, but, you know, we hear you, too many, too many animals in two residential areas is a real problem, and a small problem for the health.
But thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. Yeah, and it's like, I wonder if somebody could let me know if there's a change, if this guy could be informed, you know, because you may make a change, and I don't know, he doesn't know. Would you let me know?
And Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, these fair visits are required frequently, and we've been through this week, you said, just the over visit with backyard, our sessions are often very interesting, and any change had to be able to be accounted for. I have this picture, tell me if it occurs, I'll show that. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, just one to add, there are lots of things that hers is not an isolated case. We do receive complaints from other individuals as well, that the county, where this is obviously a concern or appears to be becoming a problem.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're on to the next, yeah?
Okay.
So we moved on, we're in amendments to Article 5 through 10. In Article 5, we have the two zones, neighborhood zones, and planning of development zones, ages 101 through 115, sections 5.9.1 through 5.4.1. We removed Article 6, neighborhood zones, we combined it with Article 5. We created general procedures, initiation timelines, off, designation, and zoning incorporated all this into Article 5. We also renamed the county zones to community zones, to clarify the areas, and we created the planning of development zone. In the public notice section, page 122 through 124, section 6.1, 2 through 6.1.5, we created the applicant who's responsible for the publication meetings and payment of costs of publication, except for community and neighborhood zone applications, where the county shall be responsible for the publication meetings and payment of costs of the publication. In the variance section, page 127 through 128, sections 8.1.1 through 8.1.2, we are just requiring supporting documents for the application submitted. In the appeals section, page 129 through 132, section 9.1.1 through 9.2.1, we removed the appeals of a party, only applicant can appeal planning director on his zoning clearance application, and not ones that control zoning clearance application. Okay, and we move on with amendments, Article 11, and appendix 3 and 4. We moved, I suspicion, we will remove the severity of ability clause to the end of the document, on page 134, section 11.1.1, and in appendix, the terrain management, page 146, section 3, we remove the field plan section within the terrain management, because we have an ordinance in place that covers the area. And we did add the fire protection, appendix number 4, page 149 through 158. We created an authority having jurisdiction requirements for all residential administrators, special use, and major developments, and requirements for all commercial developments in high or very high communities at risk ratings, requirements for all residential developments in high or very high communities at risk ratings, and we also created a defensible space, sample site plan schematic, and we also created a well fire security form check list. Okay, lastly, to speak on the nuisance and the BMA, to create this, I think we need to establish authority having jurisdiction, which can either be the planning department, sheriff's department, or solid waste department, as these, and we feel it should be a standard of amendments. Planning staff would like to go forward with the current proposed changes in the lack of regulations, without having to add a nuisance and a BMA section. Planning staff would prefer not to be the authority having jurisdiction, but we are going to work with the legal department, sheriff's department, solid waste staff, to create a nuisance and a BMA ordinance.
Mr. Chairman, in support of what Nathan just said, the issue, I've worked with many communities trying to address nuisance type issues, it is a very valid concern, as this, as this citizen just described her issue, and there are similar issues. I got a call from a citizen the other day, working with administration, not having enough found relief, then asked to talk to me, and he talked it through, and he's a very knowledgeable attorney in the community, and he's very frustrated by the fact that we don't have a current ability to enforce on these types of nuisances. His was junk cars, junk trailers, and such on local property. And I just want to, the reason why I support what Nathan just said about deciding where to do and how to do it is, it's a financial decision. In order to do it right, you as a county need to put resources into it, both enforcement officers, and then also, one of the most effective things you can do is, because as most of you probably know, to do zoning enforcement, the only mechanism for violations is to go through the magistrate court, which is a very difficult process to deal with, and because magistrate court deals with a lot of criminal matters that seem much more significant, like DWI's and so forth, where here, you're dealing with many times disputes between two neighbors, which is hard to fit in that process. It's doable, and many, many places do it, it's just, it's not, it's not a perfect fit. So with, you can send letters, you can send demands to their county, and ultimately, you can clean and lien. The county has the authority to have, establish a fund, which would address the worst properties annually, and then you can clean, send resources out there to have the property cleaned, and you can place a lien on the property to get that paid back. Now, it's a very severe remedy, but for severe cases, it is absolutely appropriate. But you have to have the resources to put all that in place, and it's entirely doable, but I suggest that it be taken on through a planned amendment process, through a hiring process, because right now, planning staff is barely able to handle the desk, which are making positions that they're having difficulty filling. So that's just my recommendation.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Go ahead. No, go ahead.
I do agree with Mr. Adio, there's an instance, a question that we asked, the urban assistant of the village on the property that we knew didn't have water, didn't have sewer, just a very bad place, had rodents, and abandoned cars, and everything, and attacked the village filing, went through Port System of America, and we still ended up carrying burden because they couldn't recover any of that cost back. So if we do start to try to do this, I do agree that we better put something in a budget, and definitely have that enforcement, so that we use all our resources there, prop this aid forward, in one regard, and other numbers, we continue to be able to clean people's yards, and then until they sell or do something with that property, they ain't going to be just sitting there with a lien for, for maybe, so they won't get resolved. So we need to consider that in the future, for those that are here in the future to take that challenge on. So, that's the thing.
Well, yeah, and I agree with, if we need a separate ordinance that has teeth, and that, I guess Albuquerque City of Albuquerque is doing something where they not only put a lien, but they acquire the property.
And Commissioner O'Donnell, yes, it's possible, you can, after the lien is placed, and if it's not being paid off, you can foreclose on it. Again, it's a very drastic remedy, but it is legal.
And I just think if people do that, then they might be more willing to clean up their property. And I've got two places on Modest Lane, just off of Whit Road, there is an abandoned trailer, it's a big eyesore, then there's another property on Modest, and I don't think it's right, I don't think the citizens deserve that. I think it decreases their property value as well, if they have abandoned trailers surrounding their neighborhoods. So, you know, at one point, Mr. Sanchez had written an initial draft of abandoned structures, and had a, it was, it was great, it had a good detail of remedies, and maybe if you could take a look at that, Mr. Adio, and make some changes to it, because I hate to have another two or three years go by, I brought this up when we were doing our LUR revision last time, and it was also suggested it be a separate ordinance, and it never got done. I'd like to see this get done.
Mr. Chairman, one final thing, I know you can move on, but the other thing is that I think it needs talking about at this point is, one of the hardest things to do, if you go forward with this, is the political will, because what happens is, whenever the enforcement arm then focuses on a piece of property, everyone has a story. Every person who is the subject of this, many times it's poverty, many times it's drugs, alcohol, and things, and it is gut-wrenching. So you as commissioners have to have the wherewithal, and you can always get them resources to try to fix those issues, but the point of it is, it's a politically harsh thing, but sometimes necessary.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
And Mr. Chairman, I can relate exactly to what our attorney is saying, and I'll probably get my windows shot out, but there is a property, as you come into Taos, and you can't come out, or over egg farms, and the mess is not only on the private area, but it's also on the state riding lane, and, you know, I've complained about it to a lot of people, including our own staff, but nothing seems to be able to happen. So we need to be able to create a law that addresses that, where there are these issues that are both private, as well as state or county or federal areas. And Marty, Chairman, I have a question.
In relation to this subject, you just go up to, we had a, just the other day, we had a paralegal, and he went up there, our neighbor, calling, started to fire there. But just before that, you'll find that our neighbor, Mr. Duran, instead of taking it to the dump, he's putting on this little piece of property, and it, it's trees and his little garbage that he gets from his construction business, and just piled it there, which is a nice sort of the community, but nonetheless, it also, in our opinion, is affecting the environment and the water source of our ditch. Secondly, just because they, I'm saying that because they see him do that, there's a little way through there, east from there, there's another dump site that he's created, we're up on the hill there, somebody came in, deviled up a piece of property there, there again is another bunch of pines that are being set there, and I would hope that, I mean, I followed, I followed the white man that was over there, and I said, we're going to look at it, I haven't heard anything more than just went to look at it. So I would hope to encourage the commission to do something about that. Thank you very much for speaking.
One thing, Nathan, one thing to add to this, is in doing the lien on properties, one thing, you know...
important is that a lot of the dump areas or the Carson area, those areas, where if you actually put a lien on those properties, they're not very monitored, or it's hard to locate the owners. So we're going to have to create in how we deal with those antiquated areas or certain things also. So there's going to have to be a lot of study in going into this ordinance to really fully accomplish what we're trying to do.
Maybe if there's one other somewhere that we can bring from another county or something, and just gives the basis that's tried, and maybe through your NMC contacts, we can at least start a format.
I have, Commissioner O'Donnell said, and I've heard on certain things, I'll review these, because I have heard.
Okay. Mr. Peter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And Commissioner, I just want to kind of agree with what Mr. Santiago was saying. You know, we witnessed firsthand a lot of times that the department had a lot of these people's, these other homes. And to be exact, we've tried to have these individuals come to compliance as much as possible. Mrs. Homero, as our county's certificated official, does have the authority to basically navigate residential structure. And it's really difficult to displace a family, especially when that's their own source of residential use and that kind of stuff. And so, again, similar to what Mr. Santiago indicated, what is the will of the commission? Do you all, do you all want us to explore this? And certainly, we could do this, I guess at a later point. But if it is the will of the commission, we need to make sure that we have your batch to be able to go to the magistrate court and basically have that strong argument of law to do the enforcement, if that's the will of the commission as well. Because there is a remedy or a process in our land use regulations, but once we exhaust that remedy, the next step is obviously the magistrate court. And that's something that you've all prepared for us in that direction. Thank you.
Commissioner, please.
I think these are really great changes to the land use regulations, really important work that you and Mr. Santiago have done. And I'm just very pleased, and just want to emphasize that we need to take it to the finish line. I think the discussions about nuisance and BACMA are also critical, and really an important thing for us to address. But I don't think we can put our resources in there just yet, you know, until we get to the finish line of these land use rates. Because this will open up a lot of opportunities for new areas to be zoned. And once you get into that, then you can really more easily control some of the nuisance and the BACMA issues within the zoning regulations. Although I agree with Mr. Santiago that a separate ordinance is also very important, so.
I think this streamlines a lot of the process and shoulders aside, which is what people have been asking, and I think you guys have done a great job. Thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to add that I appreciate Commissioner O'Donnell's thoughts on a lot of things that she mentioned today. It would be nice if this commission, if you can address a lot of those issues, you know, start addressing a lot of those issues at some point or another. She's correct in saying a lot of what she said today, you know, it took some time, but really appreciate that she did so.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to conclude by thanking Mr. Sanchez, thank you, Mr. Pahav, thank you, Mr. Rodrigo, and thank you, Mr. Corro. And also, thank you to the rest of the members of our planning department. A lot of individuals have provided some input, not only from the Department, but in our department. But Mr. Sanchez and I, and Mr. Pahav's staff, competed with a lot of members of the public who have come to the department and actually given us some directions as to how they think that we should do the plans and land use regulations, and we've actually taken those into consideration. So there's a lot of people behind the scenes that have worked and thought to get to this point.
I'm very appreciative. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just make a couple other quick comments. In your recycling definition, it is not a complete sentence. It says with a screen, and so that needs to be completed under the recycling definition. I also think we need language for home garage repair. So you have something for industrial, but, you know, I've got a neighbor who he's repairing vehicles all the time out of his garage, and they're not his. So I don't know how you address that. I don't know why you took out, did you take out recreational vehicles defined? Or something that seemed like? I think we, instead of 180 days, under that definition, it should be 365. We've got, and I don't even want to go there, where we've got people living in recreational vehicles permanently, but I think the 180 should be changed to 365. I don't know, I, there was something on J, I can't find it according to my notes, about 30 days or something. The numbers I have don't jive with the, I have a 4.419, which is in the documents, so, but something to do with 30 days.
Can you figure that out?
I think that's it, those were the main things, the home garage repairs, the recycling, and I'm not sure, the term of the vendor permits, I just wonder if we should extend those, like Cipapuca's a yearly event. Why do they have to come back every year for a vendor permit? Can't we just have language that allows that to be a permanent vendor permit? If we know Cipapuca's going to have a function every single year, why do they have to come every single year to get a permit? So those were my comments. If I find that 30-day reference, I'll let you know.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Donnell. Come on, come to the office, and we can sit down in the number room specifically.
Thank you. Have a good rest of your day.
Item 7 under Budget Matters is approval of the 2018-19 fiscal year interim budget for Taos County. Ms. Martinez.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. During a workday session held on May 15th, I complemented the review of the 2019 interim budget that's provided. Since that time, I have updated the grants, the debt service, the capital projects, and companies, and I have finalized the detailed transfers. The general fund revenues are projected to increase by 2.41% or about $128,000. General fund expenditures are projected to increase by 1.13% or $131,000. Taos County will continue to invest $3.25 billion of the general fund, which has been included as part of interim budget. Before I submit the 2019 final interim budget to DFA, I will identify investments in the healthcare assistance fund in the amount of $1,056.51, and the debt service fund, I will include those investments of $750,000. At this time before you, for consideration, is a balanced budget, taking into consideration the department's needs for a physically sound operating budget. I would like to thank all the departments and debt officials and my staff for providing their budget requests and budget funds for the 2019 fiscal year. In conclusion, all of the major funds have sufficient cash flow to start the fiscal year off, and I recommend approval.
Commissioner, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner O'Donnell, if I'm in order, I would like to, first of all, open up all of the staff for amazing work that you guys do. I continue to be amazed that you guys have, you know, with our leadership of our manager as well, and the rest of the staff, really impressed. As my term comes to an end over the next two and a half years, I feel good about what I, in my part, am bringing behind, so thank you very much for all that you do. With that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to set a motion to approve the 2018-2019 fiscal year interim budget for Taos County as presented.
Second, a motion number 2 to approve the 2018-19 fiscal year interim budget for Taos County. Commissioner Diago.
Who could we, just from understanding, what was said for Mr. Corro, who probably says we can help as well, what has been said for what we, what staff are getting as far as raises? There was a lot of information, I can't remember offhand, I want to make sure it's something that.
I'll let you say it from the bottom of my head.
So, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner, in terms of the raises, are union-eligible employees get on duty? That's been negotiated in collective bargaining agreement, and that's always been budgeted for. Our, this year, we were moving forward with a performance-based evaluation, and through completion of that, we offered a 2% raise to our Department and classified employees. We are in the middle of compensation-pacification study. In fact, we have a follow-up meeting this afternoon with our vendor to kind of finalize the details of that, and try and get that complete. Through that, there's a decent adjustments, and there are some disparities in certain areas of the county and certain departments that we feel we have to fix before we continue to, you know, latterly, give raises to the whole. There's disparities, and we've got to fix those disparities before we keep making things worse. There are certain positions that may be red-tagged for the sake that they're at the high end, and there's other positions that may need to be adjusted because they're too low. And that's what the concrete class study will help us identify the most there. Upon completion of that, our goal is to implement that. Right now, we have rough estimates of what it would cost to implement that, and it's between $20,000 and $40,000. So we put aside what would be necessary to implement that plan. A lot of the criticism I've heard as manager is in the past, we've done these plans, and the plans sit on the shelf. So we definitely don't want to get to the end of it and have it sit on the shelf like it does. We want to be able to implement, make the adjustments necessary, and then kind of reset where we're at as a county. And so that is our goal of this budget year. If we get to the mid-year, there's opportunity to get other options for our staff, either as manager, continue to recommend to the board things like buying down, giving our employees that may not necessarily be underpaid, but that are over-deducted, more money in their pocket by helping cover some of those required reductions like that. We have a lot of room to run on that. We showed you guys last time, we bought down about 314 out of 75%. So we still have a long way to run in terms of how we can buy down that arrow. So those are our goals with employees, that's what we've been working on over the last two years, and I feel we've come a really long way. And, you know, we gave a 2% raise last year, another 2% for the classified Department heads. The gaps that we had are getting smaller. And so for the most part, we're much closer to equality than we have ever been in the past. So the concrete class study, hopefully, will get us over that final hurdle, and then we can move forward unilaterally with the county, all in the same age.
And I appreciate that as well, Mr. Chairman, because the way I see it, more we help our employees, they're the ones that make us work. We don't do the work.
Our most valuable assets.
Yeah, they're the ones that are trenches on the daily basis of the work, and we need to show them that, we appreciate that.
And Mr. Corro, so you have a definitive timeline on this study? We want to see it happen by mid-year, for those that are, we sit here waiting for 2%. We've talked about putting deadlines on certain things, that this is a deadline that we can see proceed in the next few months. Because I think, sometimes then I have the feeling that a lot of, you can get a raise, and the raise lasts for three months, and it's the same old job. But if you want to have some continued accountability and morale stability, it's important to make sure this study is done, everybody understands, and it's across-the-board understanding, how the raise schedule is set, communicating that, you know, I've moved it on the bush, but there was conversations that you were just talking about, you were going to get 3% raise, and I didn't feel that was a good rumor to have been going around secretly among the counties, community, especially inside the building. So I tried to defend it as best I could, to say that it hasn't come to the commission to at least be approved. So I want to make that clear, because you're doing your job out there to, how about, we work in conversations, Department head and staff, there. Everybody knows exactly what's, where they fall in the structure of getting 2% raise, longevity is to everybody else in the performance study that they're still looking to get their compensation. I just, being clear eliminates all those little conversations that people have in back rooms, and square question, and have a low morale.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, I just answer your question. Our goal was to have this done already, we had a target date of February, and as we got further involved, and we get into the details, there's more work that needs to be done, we want to do it right. We don't want to do it halfway, or do it without every question being answered. So to get this done thoughtfully, we are going to have to do a little bit more in-depth work at a staff level, and I think we're prepared to do that. But it may not be able to be done in one or two months, I do want to have the time to do it right. And so I hear you, I definitely want to be able to get this out of the way. I want to be able to implement the idea of a step plan, where improvements to salary are based on the job description, and it's not a decision by the county manager. Because what we're fixing now, quite honestly, are a lot of mistakes from the past. And there was the ability to manage from the past, just, hey, I like this person, and they see them doing a good job, and give them a big raise, others didn't get so much. I want to eliminate that from the county. That's not my role as the county manager, just unilaterally saying, hey, I'm going to give this person a raise, this one, that. So we do want to get what you're getting, what you're suggesting, we want to get to that point. But if it takes another month or two, I'm going to ask for that time, so that we can do it thoughtfully and implement it correctly. And regards to my raise, thank you, I'm very grateful for the money that the taxpayers pay me, but you all, I will never ask or take a dime that you have unauthorized for me, and I have not. So I just want to clarify that, too. That's where rumors turn into lies, it's just unfortunate that's getting spread out there. Because I would never ask or take anything that wasn't authorized by this board.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
So in relation to job descriptions, how many do you anticipate will be changing in relation to this new compensation plan?
I don't have a direct number. We do have a majority of probably good that just need to be updated, but there are some that do need to be drilled down further. We have jobs that have a slash, or two or three slashes next to them, which in other words, we're having three jobs and one person, that kind of thing needs to be addressed. We also have job descriptions that are antiquated, no longer relevant, we're going to make those changes. So I don't have an exact answer on that, it's part of our follow-up this afternoon. We've been spending hours at a time with our contractor and our HR staff, and really truly know and getting into those details.
And do, does the commission still approve the change in job descriptions?
No, the commission does not, is not quite change job description anymore. New merit ordinance allows the management to do that.
Thank you. I do have some questions about the budget and the ordinance.
So, I appreciate that, Mr. Corro, I think it helps, and, you know, we talked about being transparent, so that's.
Anything else?
Oh, yeah, I do, but relating to the job descriptions, it would be nice, Mr. Corro, if you could just report to us when everything is said and done, what your changes will be in the job descriptions if we no longer have the authority to approve those. I want to move on to, if we could, maybe, Mr., Ms. Martinez, if we could move back to the lodgers' tax fund, and I wanted to see the rentals fees, is that our B&amp;B? You budgeted $5,000, you've actually taken in more, but yet, you're still projecting $5,000, and not the what you've taken in so far. So is that going to be revised, and is that, is that the B&amp;B?
No, that is not the B&amp;B, that's what we, that's what we collect for the rent of our facilities. So that has nothing to do with the lodger's tax, it's going into the town, it's for the rent of our local facilities.
Okay, so where would we find that new contract that we entered into on Airbnbs and the revenues that we take in?
Commissioner, no, that's part of the lodger's tax total, so if you look at the lodger's tax. So for fiscal year 2018, Taos County budgeted $280,350. So, for fiscal year 2018, Taus County budgeted $288,350. As of March 31st, Taus County did collect $305,000. For the interim budget, we mentioned that we would keep revenue flat, so there would be no increases to that until we find out what the actuals are when we close the books to the period. At that point, I will increase probably lodger's tax, but not by much, I'm only normally 5%.
So, the, then that means we've taken in $25,000 from the Airbnb contract?
If you would like to break down the numbers of the Airbnb has been generated, I can provide you a detailed report as to how much money Taus County has received for the Airbnb.
I would like to see that, and did we ever resolve the issue that they're using zip codes? And then, so that means some of that Airbnb money's going to the town and not us? That Airbnb needs to correct that, so we get our fair share? There was one landowner who said she is paying into the town because of Zipca, but she actually lives in the county. So, is there a way we can address that?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner O'Donnell will have to follow up and look into that, see how we can possibly address that. I was under the impression Airbnb had our boundaries and they understood where we were, so we'll have to improve.
Okay, thank you, okay. So, we're seeing some money coming in now, that's great. Thank you. The detention fund, where you do the permanent transfer of the $350,000, was that originally for the residential treatment center? And so, I'm wondering, is that amount still necessary in the detention fund? At one point, I know you'd set aside $350 for the RTC.
We never...
They were separated, the 300 that we set aside for the RTC was set aside in reserves as part of the allocation of our reserve balances. The transfer of the $350 is necessary.
Okay, so it's not related, the two aren't, aren't the same, okay. I'd still like to see a 3% increase for the animal shelter budget. That's just my opinion. I don't see how we can pay $144 for 15 years and expect them to do their job when we're not increasing a standard of living costs. So, I'm still going to ask that we amend that for another 3% increase in that budget. We pay senior citizen centers, we pay way more. This argument of, oh, we pay more to the animals than the seniors is not a valid argument. We have a big budget of about $1 million to our senior budget. So, that argument doesn't fly. So, I would like the commission, I'd like to make an amendment to the animal control budget to reflect a 3% increase above the...
What, $4800?
I would have a dollar's budget if I did that.
And, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, I want to caution, at this time, we're in the middle of the ROT process, pre-determining who we're going to award the contract to, is not best practice, and also pre-determining the amount provided to reviewing the proposals, is not best practice. We need to be very careful at this point as to what we're suggesting in the ROT process.
Okay, well, then, Wendy, is that appropriate to suggest?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner O'Donnell, I personally want to wait until we see the proposal. As I've said before, we need to have a fee for service in any contract we work on. This is one of the last contracts where we have to clear a flat fee, and we're not really necessarily receiving the proper fee for services. So, when we get the proposal, that's when we can look at how we restructure the contract. But we can't start negotiating a contract prior to awarding a bid.
If this is currently in our ROT, I don't know, just stop in the conference.
Okay, all right, that's fine.
Nothing else?
Vice Chairman. I just, Mr. Chairman, there's grants that come in from the senior programs. Was the county acting appropriate to the portion?
So, on this side, it was very small to see, the Taus County contributes each $4,000 to be spent every year.
The county...
Taus County.
So, that's 70, 60-some thousand dollars less than they did for that. I just want to make that clear. The county does, we receive a lot more grant fund on the, than the county actually puts in. Well, I'm not pushing anyone that, Mr. Chairman, I asked my questions earlier, so I'll find out.
Well, then, what, what would be the appropriate amount to increase for the senior fund? And I guess my question is, are you going to be looking at increasing their salaries there?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, everyone in the senior program, the increase last, last year, where they get three years with the county, who extended the long term these two in one of the senior centers. So, right now, no, we don't have any budget in for any basis for them or anybody else that the county at this time. If we need to increase our allocation to the senior center, we will, when we come forward, we know more what they need. We certainly suggest that, if that's what's necessary, to keep that program running. We've also had a request from the seniors in different areas, things to like help with senior Olympics or other programs that they have, so we want to try and keep that in consideration as well. There's still a lot of needs over the senior program, and we don't fund it as much as we fund the animals from our general fund. So, yeah, we could increase anything, I would suggest we increase seniors.
And then, is that, could we easily increase, we had a shortfall, you said, what was that, $57?
$57,000 was the shortfall between the combined cuts of the loans for the...
Well, then, I'm going to make a motion to amend the budget to include the $57,000 increase to the seniors.
But, Commissioner, what Ms. Martinez said and was not heard, was budget is balanced with what she's presenting to us at the workshop, when we had the opportunity to go with that. It showed, I believe, a $9,460 surplus, which is not really a surplus, and obviously, since she's made adjustments to what I sent now, difference is $1,386. Where does she get the rest of the other $56,000? She has a balanced budget now. If we make changes now, then she's out of balance, DFC rejects it, and then we're back to square.
Okay, well, I would draw that. So, let's go back to the road fund. I had made a request for additional money to be put in there out of our, these funds changed, the old $399 is now some other fund name. Did you place those in, based on my request at the last budget workshop?
So, what we did in the public works fund, to alleviate this fund, we've taken out some personnel, and we placed these administrative personnel in the general fund budget to alleviate the transfers and to reduce our requirement, giving this fund a little bit more of an operating budget. That was taken into consideration.
So, how much?
So, when you look at the public works wide allocation there, the amount of this fund decreased to 4%, only because the staffing personnel that we took out of this fund were moved into the general fund. So, that would transfer that much cash to this fund, reduce the reserve requirement, and properly allocate the expenses for the two ladies that were in this fund that should have been in the general fund.
So, how much do we have for road projects this year?
So, in this fund, this is only an operating budget for this fund. The road projects are still going to fall through the $399 fund, which has not changed, the funding name is still $399.
So, how much is in there for road projects this year, this next fiscal year?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner O'Donnell, our goal is to add a million dollars to new projects, a million dollars plus whatever outstanding payments carry forward, that is still existing in the project.
All right, thank you very much.
Attorney General.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Blakemore?
Yes.
Vice Chair Agles?
Yes.
Chairman Fender?
Yes, next item on the agenda, thank you. Next item on the agenda is our county manager's report of approval of meeting dates for the month of July. Everyone, we can have a call.
So, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, as I mentioned in the last meeting, I just wanted to clarify, request the changes for July, July 3rd to May 8th, July 10th, and July 17th being moved to July 24th. So, that will be starting from that month, the second and fourth Tuesday instead of the first and the third.
Motion, I think, for... Move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Motion, second to move to the meeting dates, as previously advertised in the Meetings Act, resolution from the 3rd to the 10th to 17th to the 24th, starting at 9:00 AM.
Attorney General.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Blakemore?
Yes.
Vice Chair Agles?
Yes.
Chairman Fender?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, before we adjourn, I...
All right, this is the end, then I'll go right to the question.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, one more request I'd like to make to the board, we had talked about, we have a candidacy meeting on June 8th. I'd like to see if the board will be willing to stick around and do a work study on capital improvement projects, public works projects, not least, I feel like I'd give the use of our time. Since you're here for 15 minutes, I'm going to take the rest of the morning, we'll...
Attorney General. That's June 8th. Correct yesterday, so who do we expect to show up?
Yes, sir.
June 8th. Canvassing and special meeting, work study, and a special work study. Mr. Chair? Yes, Vice Chair. Mr. Corbbo, do we change the date, June 19th meeting?
Yes.
To what date?
To the following Tuesday, after we cut the NAC conference, we made the decision to move that to...
To the 26th?
Yes.
Canvassing was what time, though?
9:00.
Okay. I remember when we have county, state days, the mayor, the...
So, motion to include, after the canvassing meeting on Friday, June 8th, workshop, getting at 9:00 AM. So, move?
Second, Mr. Chairman. Attorney General.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Blakemore?
Yes.
Vice Chair Agles?
Yes.
Chairman Fender?
Yes.
Anything else, Mr. Corbbo?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I just, if I take this opportunity and let you know about my name, Secretary of CYDP last Wednesday, I did have a chat with Secretary Jacobson and the Bureau Chief in charge of the licensing for an RTC. Because of the decision to shut down the juvenile detention center, a lot of the concerns that we had about housing the two together have been alleviated, and CYDP did agree to come and do one final tour of the facility to give us one final punch, so to speak, of what would be required in terms of changes that they would request to satisfy their licensing for that building. It's not a sure thing, and it was not promised, no, it was promised to us. This was about, the best I could go for was for them to reevaluate it one last time. So, they're working on scheduling that walkthrough here soon to give us, like I said, a final list of things that they have changed about that building. So, we think that this was some price to move changes, and then I can come to make the recommendation over there together to the board, depending on what that, those potential costs could be, if it is still a possibility. So, the other conversations we had with the secretary was with regards to alternative programming, they gave us some great ideas, things that we would like to try and continue to work with them on, and so I will continue to follow up with CYDP as a whole and see what we can do to bring any program that could benefit our youth to 100 in Mexico to Taus County. It was, it was me that was not exactly what I would have hoped for, but I think he was positive at the end of it that we can work together and try and bring those programs started.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Did they say when they're going to come up and do the punch list?
They didn't give an exact date, but I think they're already working on something. I would ask as soon as possible, the final question, and see if they're ready, so that we can make a decision.
Um, Mr. Chairman, my only request is, has the county manager decided about the Pinasco Fiesta since their June 14th, 15th, and 16th?
I see.
Is there going to be a float, is there not going to be a float, is, because it's an election year, is, I have to walk it? But I just want to know if we're going to have a float, and then we'll decide whether I can be in it or not.
Hold on, how long is the parade?
The parade's a good hour, it's a long rally.
I want to know why, because I want to know...
Two and a half miles, it's a tough one.
It's a long commute.
I can, but it's, I'm actually exhausted, I don't make it all the way.
Quite honestly, Commissioner O'Donnell, we have not explored that since the last meeting, so we're going to talk about that, that was the top priority of the week, coming, making a budget out of it.
Right, no, I know.
We'll look at that and see what our ideas would be.
Or a theme, or I don't know what the theme is, but I liked what the ladies did last year for the float.
We'll work on that.
Okay, thank you.
I'll share the job.
I, Vice Chair. Before, before you make your last motion to adjourn, I asked that Sheriff come on for a second to tell you guys about what's going to be going on in Northern part of county, and we'll give you a couple seconds.
Maybe the fire talking, take a couple of seconds.
Well, I'll do my best, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. And I apologize, I didn't realize there wasn't a citizens forum on today's June that I intended to speak about this thing, but this is pretty exciting. The American Veterans Travel Tribute is bringing their replica wall that travels all over the United States. They're bringing it to the Red River Rally, it's a motorcycle on Memorial Day, and it's coming weekend. We were able through some negotiations with the Chamber Director from Red River and the village of Questa's manager, Nick, to convince the driver of this truck to bring in three Questa tomorrow afternoon. We pick him up at the state line, and law enforcement and other public safety will escort this trailer into the village, where we will park in front of the heating fields, which is a field of flags that has over 1,000 flags displayed. It's being worked on right now, volunteers from the village as well as the Shutter Online and getting that set up. We will stop briefly at the VFW in Questa, pick up additional personnels from the escort, come into the village of Questa, turn and park in front of the heating fields. There'll be an opportunity for a short ceremony there with the village, with the VFW, the veterans, and at some point, at the end of that, we'll pick up the escort and take them on Highway 38 into the town of Red River to their final destination, which is the vacant field next to the conference center there. This is an 80% replica, it's 360 feet long approximately, it's eight feet high at the apex, and then has the flags extended above that. It's quite an honor to have this brought into our county, our community, and for law enforcement and public safety to be able to escort this in. So, I just want to brief the commission on that. I pick him up at the state line at 2:00, he's traveling in from Wyoming today in the moonlight. I should pick him up at 2:00 if all goes well, we should be in the village limits by 2:30, do our ceremony there, and then pick up and be at the final destination in Red River, presumably around 4:00. I would encourage the commission to go, I understand that if there's potential for a corral, that would need to be advertised. Apologize for not getting this to the commission and the community sooner than today, but we only finalized this yesterday about noon.
Thank you. If I was to say 2:30, I would like to be there, you would be there with the mayor. Anybody else, sir?
I would love to, but I have a board meeting with the VIA tomorrow.
I'll keep all, I'll keep you at 1:40, you're 1:45. I have, I have these people flowers, so...
So, it's going to be after Red River, is what you said? It will be, after the ceremony's in Questa, we travel and drop them to their final destination, Red River, tomorrow afternoon. We're, we're out. For the conference center in Long River Street, it's in the vacant lot immediately west of that. It'll be set up starting tomorrow evening, it takes about 20 people, about 10 hours to set this thing up, it's pretty elaborate, it's, it's big. And then it will be set up Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, taken down Monday, and he'll travel to his next destination. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, we're, I don't think the corral issue is there, it's probably just convenient.
Okay.
I don't know, he won't recognize you, it's like, I'll be honest, it's like I wasn't there anyway, so.
I love you, too.
Anything else? Item 419.
Item 199, punchy already, because I'm here long enough. Motion, Hoover. I'll figure, say, all right? Thank you all.